John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And Michael O'Brien will be joining us in just a moment. He's been delayed in traffic. If everyone would rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on June 17th and one on July 1st. And we have a couple of minutes to be approved. And Pam, if it's all right, I'm going to hold those over until our next meeting. I still haven't had a chance to go through the April 1st meeting yet. The first item on our agenda tonight is an amended resolution for the John J. Gas Station
John J. Gas Station. Back for the amended resolution, I think we had a majority of the issues that we spoke about last meeting recovered. And I think the board indicated that they did like the lot, the layout with the three pump configuration, right in, right out, near Lake Drive and Route 52. Our previous approval still holds as far as lighting, hours of operation, drive-through, landscaping, May tweak here and there because of the configuration of the entrance modification. But building size remains the same, parking remains the same. I think the biggest thing was the entrance configuration and DOT's ultimate sign-off given us conceptual on the entrance. I think the one last thing that we were throwing back and forth was a bond amount for the DOT with the entrance. And I think we talked about two years, but I think as things kind of shook out, we're going to do three years from a certificate of occupancy and post $200,000 bond.
Okay.
Seems to be what's floating now and other.
Okay.
And the applicant's fine with that.
Okay. And all the other terms, and we'll get to offering the amended resolution, but all the other terms that were in the original resolution stand?
Stand.
Aside from the traffic light, obviously.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Brendan, Michelle, Scott?
I just have one comment. Being that the water main, I don't think is nailed down necessarily the exact location, I would just request at the end that we get an ASBIL showing exactly where the final location of that water line is.
Okay. Make that part of the CO.
Okay. Okay. Great. Any other comments, Brendan, Michelle, Joe? Same. Any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
Okay. I have a revised negative declaration here. The only change from the last time that we looked at this is we've revised the traffic section to indicate that we've amended the entrance traffic onto Lake Drive to limited and that we have the bond being posted for future traffic studies since the traffic light will not be going in. So other than that, the neg dec remains the same. Do I have a motion to approve the amended negative declaration?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then do I have someone to offer the amended resolution?
I will.
Thank you, John.
Resolution amending a resolution of final approval. Name of subdivision, Gasland Petroleum Incorporated. Name of applicant, John J. Gas Station. Location, Route 52 in Lake Drive. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Hutzco. Whereas the above referenced property received final site plan approval from this board on November 19th, 2013, and whereas the applicant then applied to New York State DOT for a highway work permit to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Lake Drive and Route 52, which was a specific requirement of the final approval, and whereas New York State DOT indicates that the light at this time does not meet the warrants set by them and will not approve the installation of said light, and whereas the applicant has submitted a modified plan eliminating one fuel station and modifying the traffic flow within the site and curb cuts onto Route 52 so as to direct all traffic onto 52 and control its ingress and egress onto the site, and whereas following further review by the planning board, the board feels that this modification would at this time eliminate the need for having a traffic signal installed, and whereas the planning board has on this date adopted an amended negative declaration addressing the modification with respect to the traffic, now therefore be it resolved that the final approval previously granted by this board be and hereby is modified by deleting the requirement for the installation of a traffic signal at Lake Drive and Route 52, and be it further resolved that the modified site plan submitted by the applicant's engineers, M. Gillespie Associates LLC, dated January 15th, 2011, and further revised through May 6th, 2014 be and hereby is approved. And be it further resolved that the requirement of the traffic signal condition is deleted and replaced with the requirement that the applicant shall post the bond in a sum of $200,000 for a period of three years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for said property. During said three-year period, the applicant will at the request of the town pay for a traffic study to determine the impacts of opening of an operation of the site and agrees to pay for any fair share of the cost of any improvements necessary on the Route 52 corridor due to any traffic attributable to his property, and be it further resolved that in all other ways, the resolution of final approval be and hereby is ratified and confirmed, and be it further resolved-
Okay, hold on one, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Any comments or changes by board members? Okay. All right. Go ahead, John. Thank you.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Second in by Michael, and votes as follows. John Hutzco?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. Okay. The second item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Hilltop Manor, 21 lot, Creek Bend Road, Seeker. Pam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing? Okay? Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Come on up.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have the plan to put up on the, to put up on the screen? Do we, Pam, do we have an elect, that's a requirement for all the public hearings. We'll see if we can find it in our planning office. Bear with us, folks, we'll see if we can get a plan that we can project up on the screen. If we can't, we'll ask that this board be turned around so you're able to see the project as we're speaking about it. While we're doing that, Tom, would it be all right if I, can I just ask you to give us a quick summary? Because I know this isn't a traditional public hearing, like for the subdivision itself, it's really more the seeker completeness discussions.
Right. Good evening. For the edification of everyone, I'd just like to explain the process so that the public fully understands where their input can come in and what the board is doing. An application was made with respect to the proposed subdivision of this property. Some time ago, the planning board listed all the initial items that they viewed from the plan that should be reviewed under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Before a planning board can consider any application, it has to do a full environmental review of any impacts. So the board, together with the planner and engineer for the town, identified what they perceived to be possible impacts of this project. So the applicant then went and prepared a draft environmental impact study, and over the years has submitted several drafts of it until one was finally determined to be, quote, "complete." And what that means is that the planning board has determined that the document that is available on the website at least has a discussion of all the issues that were raised in the scope. It doesn't mean that there may not be an issue that would come up now in the process that hasn't been addressed, but that at least the ones that had previously been identified had a sufficient discussion to give everyone a general idea about the various impacts. So this evening, what happens is it's an optional process. The planning board is conducting a public hearing to allow the public to comment on the draft environmental impact study, to ask any questions with respect to the issues that they may perceive, and to perhaps identify other areas that were somehow omitted or not considered. What happens at the close of this public hearing is the board will give at least a 20-day time period for anyone to submit follow-up questions or comments in writing. The applicant then is charged to go off and to analyze all the questions, all the issues raised, and to respond to them in writing in what's known as a final environmental impact study. So this evening, there'll be some information clarified by the applicant, but any questions that are raised this evening are not necessarily answered tonight, but they will have to be answered by the applicant in the final environmental impact study. And this process will take some time. It will be, again, on the website, it will be available. And then at that juncture, the project still has to go through a series of public hearings known as subdivision public hearings where actual issues are addressed and discussed and public comments received. So this is just the beginning of the process. As I can't stress enough, this is to receive comments on that draft environmental impact study and any other environmental issues or concerns that the public might have. And then those issues will be addressed and analyzed by the applicant and the applicant's professionals and presented back to the town, a planning board, in a FEIS, which will then be reviewed by the town planning board to determine if that is complete and that it addressed all the questions. So that briefly is the process that we're endeavoring to pursue.
So one of the things we'll do tonight is we'll ask the applicant to provide an overview of what they're proposing. And when Tom refers to environmental impact, I know sometimes I just think of things like, you know, trees and birds and things like that, but with this, we look at things like noise level, traffic concerns, and that sort of thing. So it's really anything that might impact the area where the development will happen. And as Tom said, we have, we have already looked at what we think possible impacts would be, and the applicant has gone back and collected a lot of information. But this board and some of our professionals still have outstanding questions and things that we're looking for. So this is definitely a draft document, and part of what your role will be tonight is to let us know where you think we might have gaps in that document or where you have questions that we think should be answered prior to actually considering whether or not the subdivision can be done here. So with that, there are a couple of things, I know we're trying to get a picture up on the board, are we able to do that?
I'm not sure we are going to be able to do that.
Bear with us for a moment, folks.
Ma'am, if they don't have it, then it's done.
No, 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 no.
You said yourself that it's part of the application process.
Sir, sir, with respect, we need to have the picture projected up on the board. If it's not there, we'll, we'll have a few other opportunities or options here that we can discuss for how to move forward with this. Please, I'm going to ask that everybody, this is a big room, there's a lot of people here, and I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak, so if we need to-
I can't do that.
You can't project something on the board. Okay. How many copies of the plan do we have that we can pass around the audience or have available for folks to look at? I know you've got one here on the board, and I'm fine with you turning that around. This board's familiar with the plan.
I have that one, and then I have my DEIS, that's, which has multiple copies of the plan in it, in the various figures.
Okay. So let's initially do this, let's turn this board around so it's facing the audience. And if we have a couple, and Pam's not back, if we have a couple of copies of the plan, we'll see if we can circulate some copies to the audience so that everybody has a chance to look at this. And what we'll do is as we allow public comment, we'll have you come up and be able to look at the plan before you ask your question. So everybody will have an opportunity to see the plan, and I also want to emphasize what Mr. Wood said, and that is that we'll remain open for public comment at least 20 days after this meeting. So copies of the plan are available both online, if you want to access it from home on your PCs, as well, and that there's a link to the town website, the applicant also has a website with these plans. We also have copies of the plan, if you prefer to look at paper, we have copies of the plan available in the planning office that you can review there. And just bear with us for a moment as we start circulating a few of these. Sure. Sure. One more quick point of interest, and then we'll get into the description of what this is. As, as we come to the conclusion of the applicant's initial comments and any questions or comments from our professionals, we'll open up for public comment. And what I would ask is that, you'll see there's a clipboard up on our table here to my left, if you can just come up, if you sign in on the clipboard, we'll call you in the order that you sign in. It's really important for the purpose of our minutes for the meeting that we capture your names, so we'll call you up in the order that you signed in, and then as you come to the microphone, if you can just announce again your name for us, and that way we capture it for the purpose of the minutes in the meeting.
Is we, do we start that while they get ready?
Say it one more time?
Are we allowed to start that while they get ready?
If it's all right, I'd rather just pause for a couple minutes and let you sign, because if we have a lot of people moving around, unfortunately, you may notice these mics are a little sensitive, and when there's a lot of motion in the room, it's going to get loud. So I realize, I know there's a lot of us, and believe me, everybody will have, have a chance, so we'll just, we'll go ahead and move forward. Let's go ahead and have you give an overview of the project.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Ann Cudicnola, I'm from Tim Miller Associates, the environment, we're the environmental planning consultant for ECFM, who is the applicant for the proposed Hilltop Manor subdivision. The subdivision is located south of Beekman Road between Carroll Drive, Creek Bend Road to the east of Carpenter Row, to the east, and Carpenter Road to the west. Direct access to the site is proposed from Creek Bend Road. There is survey information included in Appendix 1 of the DEIS that delineates the direct access from the project site all the way onto Creek Bend Road. I know there's some questions about that, and anybody who has questions about that could review Appendix 1. And there is survey information in there that if I'm, historically have the information correct, was paid for by, was hired by the town, paid for by the applicant, that, so I know this has been a longstanding question.
Okay.
The project site is approximately 41 acres. The applicant is proposing to subdivide it into 21-
I'm sorry, Ann, just hold on. Folks, we're picking up all of your conversations, I'm just going to ask you, please, let's try to limit your discussion and listen to the person who's currently at the podium. Each of you will have an opportunity to come up, you can ask us any questions you want. We can't guarantee we'll be able to answer them tonight, but like Tom said, we'll be recording all of your questions and requiring the applicant to provide those answers. I'm sorry, Ann, go ahead.
That's okay. The project site is approximately 41 acres. The applicant is proposing to subdivide it to create 21 single-family residential lots in conformance with the R1 zoning applicable to the site. Individual wells and septic systems will be provided to each of the 21 lots in the development. A draft environmental impact statement has been prepared for the project, which, as Tom said, after five such revisions, has recently been determined to be complete with sufficient information to initiate discussion of any potential environmental impacts which need to be considered in evaluating this project. The document is available for review on the town's website, on the Tim Miller website, and has a hard copy in the planning office and the East Fish Gill Library. Based on discussions with the planning board and the town's technical review staff to date, it's acknowledged that there are concerns regarding the permanent and construction access over the Carroll Drive Bridge and the provision of a secondary access to the Carroll Drive neighborhood. The town of East Fish Gill is required by law to maintain the Carroll Drive Bridge, and the town commissioned an independent traffic consultant, HVEA, to review the structural integrity of the bridge and has recently imposed a 22-ton weight limit as a result of that study. The same study made recommendations to approve the bridge, which if implemented, could increase that weight limit. The town has made application for a federal grant to fund these improvements to the bridge. ECFM is committed to participating, if necessary, on a fair share basis with the other users of the Carroll Drive Bridge, in connection with any measures identified by the town to facilitate the town's maintenance or improvement of the, of the bridge. ECFM has also demonstrated its willingness to explore opportunities for providing secondary access for this neighborhood. Again, I'm repeating what Tom Woods already has said to a certain extent, this public hearing is on the proposed subdivision and the information presented in the DEIS. We look forward to hearing all comments related to the project, however, we will not be addressing any of these comments tonight. Pertinent comments made here this evening and any received in writing, including the town's technical staff, will be categorized, catalogued, and responded to in writing, each one, in a document known as the FEIS. The FEIS will then be submitted to the planning board for review and will be revised until it meets their satisfaction, and then circulated to all agencies once it's complete.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and just open with a couple of comments, you touched on them, but I just want to make clear formally, we will say our professionals have provided you with letters with remaining outstanding questions or changes or suggestions, so those will be incorporated into the FEIS, which will be the next version of this document.
I have, I have no problem with that. I have one logistical question, should they be resubmitted after the date of this hearing? You know, I mean, we know what the issues are, and I'm happy, I'm going to address those comments.
Right.
It's just a question of whether they should be-
I'll leave it to the discretion of the professionals, if they hear something tonight that's a public comment and they feel the need to revise their letter or something like that-
Revised, then they'll resubmit.
We will have a comment period open for this-
Of course.
And we would make sure that our letters are finalized and presented back to you within that same comment period.
Very well.
Do you think it might be a good idea to, for us to summarize those, because I think a lot of the folks out there are probably going to want to know, what are those? I mean, they're already on the list to be addressed.
Yep, we're getting there.
Okay.
No problem.
Jump the gun.
That's okay, no, that's quite all right. You've mentioned a couple of issues that you know are going to be outstanding, and so what I'd like to do is just ask Brendan, and I don't see Michelle right now, but Brendan, Michelle, and Joe, to just quickly summarize, and we don't have to go in detail through your comment letters, but if you can quickly summarize the main points, and Brendan, if I can impose upon you to start a sop, that would be great.
All right. Really, from our end, there was just, you know, the-
If I could, ma'am.
Oh.
Maybe we could just identify that the people at this table are professional staff engaged by the town, regularly review planning applications. Brendan is the traffic engineer, professional traffic engineer. Michelle's not in her seat, is the town planner. Joe Dennis is the consulting engineer for Morris Associates, and Scott Bryant is the town engineer. Sorry.
Thank you, Tom.
So really, basically, it's two big questions and probably some, some spinoffs of those, but those are, you know, with the bridge being load posted at 22 tons, you know, what are, what's going to be the means and methods of being able to, for construction to occur on that site? You know, in light of typical construction vehicles, you know, exceeding that weight of 22 tons, dump trucks, concrete trucks, delivery trucks, and such.
And Brendan, do you have a sense, I mean, is the normal, like, say, concrete truck for a foundation or something like that, is it 30,000 pounds, is it 24?
It's probably, it's in the magnitude of about 40 tons.
40 tons, and the whole bridge is load posted at 22.
And to understand 80,000 pounds is, you know, the legal load, roadway load limit, you know, on most roads. So probably the weight of the truck-
So this is one quarter of that.
Probably the weight of the truck without any concrete in it is probably in the magnitude of about 18 tons.
Okay.
So, and then concrete itself probably weighs about a ton, a ton a yard, so.
Okay.
What about like-
Two tons a yard. That's right. 4,000 pounds, right.
So, but it's not limited to that, right? It's, there are, like, for example, lumber deliveries and those kind of things are also going to be-
Sure. Even, even the equipment, the equipment that has to come into the site-
Potentially larger than the 22, yes.
But not as-
You know, the excavators and bulldozers or whatever, we need to come into the site, you know, bringing that equipment in, all materials, lumber, sheet rock, anything of that, concrete trucks, and then the loading of dump trucks and material that has to leave the site. I think our understanding is that there's going to be excess material that's going to have to be removed from the site. So all of those things. And then the second major comment is just about the, about the provision for providing some type of secondary, either emergency or, you know, emergency or secondary access, and even to discuss, you know, what, what the warrants for that access are, and if it's not going to be proposed to be provided, you know, why, why, sort of an understanding of why they think it's acceptable. Those are really the major comments. There's a couple, you know, very detailed comments related to some of the data, or the admission of some of the data in the draft DEIS relating to the ratings from the national bridge inventory and the lack of some of the information that was in, you know, the study that my company did in regards to the structural capacity of the bridge not being in the draft DEIS.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Thank you, Brendan. Michelle, can I, and thank you for getting our picture posted for us up on the, up on the wall. Can I ask you to just give a quick summary of any of the major bullet points from your letter? We've already established that all of the comments from your current letters and any letters you may revise within the next, within the comment period here would be incorporated into the FEIS, so if you want to just give us the highlights.
The major outstanding comment right now is, is just that we had asked that some description of the community services or the emergency services be included in the AS, and there was some discussion of it, and within that discussion, there was a comment made about the staffing and the, and the number of residents and the national standard, and essentially, there was a comment made that, that the Hilltop Manor subdivision would increase police staffing needs by less than one quarter of a police officer, which would equate to an expense of just over $10,000. So the, we wanted to understand where that number and that figure came from, so that was the last major comment that we said that they could address during their substantive review that was left outstanding of the, of the original comments that we made.
Anything else, Michelle?
No, I think everything else had, had been addressed.
Okay.
Michelle, what is the latest date on that memo?
April 6th.
April 6th, okay.
Joe, can I just ask you to hit the highlights as well on your current comment letter?
Sure. Yeah, our, our letter is dated May 30th, and it's a recap essentially of prior letters, just summarizing some of the issues. Again, it's the Carroll Drive Bridge capacity and condition is one of the primary issues. We're looking for them to identify specific equipment to be used in construction that would, from what they were saying in the DAS, that they could use to meet the 22-ton limit, and then how, how they would go about ensuring that the posted load limit is enforced during the construction period. Describing the cost-sharing mechanism for the bridge upgrade or maintenance going forward. Evaluating feasibility for use of a temporary bridge or a secondary access to alleviate construction loaded vehicles. And then more specifically, under secondary access to the subdivision, address the code, current code criteria related allowable length of dead-end cul-de-sac streets. Evaluating the feasibility of a construction access route for permanent access in the future. Explaining the project's conformance with the town's hazard mitigation plan, that's regarding, again, the Carroll Drive Bridge. And also getting into some more specific details on the site stormwater pollution prevention plan, looking at potential for increase to flooding conditions in the immediate area. Explaining a little further the site filling operations and the details of how they're going to proceed with filling on the site. And then also looking at drainage improvements, potential revision to the existing cul-de-sac on Creek Bend Road. In order to, in order to get the drainage from their site, they're, they're showing a new pipe, a new pipe and drainage system leading under Creek Bend Road to the creek, so those are our highlights.
Okay. Great. Scott or Tom, any other comments to add? No? Okay. Any question? Oh.
Yeah, the only thing, just, I was just talking to the highway super today, and something that kind of new came up is, and I think it can be addressed, but like the drainage structures are 20-foot deep, and Dennis is checking to make sure that the back trucks can clean those, and what kind of confined space requirements might be necessary, and the type of pipe, and to make sure all those structures are DOT spec, so. We typically don't have structures that deep in the town, so we'll be, Dennis will be taking a closer look, and I, I will be taking a closer look with him on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Scott. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I just have a few. One is, I think the schools data is a little out of date. So you might want to get an updated schools assessment on that. We used 11 and a half, 11.5,000 a year for students. I think Wobbiners is now way above that. Two, the, the steep grade, 33 percent, could we get an assessment of what the grade of the emergency access would be? Could we get an assessment of what the grade of the emergency access would be? I couldn't find the comparisons of the grade going up the hill, you know, the main entrance-
For the cut to the main entrance versus-
Versus the emergency exit, which was-
The merge, the grade, the, the town requested that we, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have cut you off.
No, go ahead, no, please.
The town requested that we look at the potential for an emergency access going out toward Carpenter Road directly. There is information in the DEIS. The road grades are in there. They're in an appendix.
I'm sorry. This was the one that said over the tracks? There was-
Over the railroad tracks?
Right. That was excluded because of the, because of grade.
The grade, I see. Okay, yes.
So, just to confirm.
That information is not there already, yes.
And I think that's it for the rest of the morrow.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments from board members, then what I'd like to do is take a pause for three or four minutes and ask members of the public, and I know there's a lot of you, so please be orderly. Everybody will have a chance here. If I can ask you to come on up to the table and go ahead and sign in, and once we've allowed everybody to do that, we'll start to call you up one by one in the order that you've signed in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.